Good morning. Wow. Good morning. That's a little better. I call to order the County of Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April 24, 2012 at 9:00 a.m. We will begin today with the flag salute led by Supervisor Duran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Duran. We will now have the Statement of Meeting Procedures read by our Clerk, Ann Holman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of April 24, 2012. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. It is requested that all cell phones be either turned off or put into silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone may address the Board on any item not on today's agenda. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes since time allocated is 15 minutes. If we exceed our 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, we will take public comment up again at the end of the regular session. So at this time, if anyone would like to come forward and address the Board, please do so, understanding that the Board is not permitted to take any action on items brought forward under public comment.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Joanne Neft. I'm from Auburn, California, and I am here because I want to let you know that we've written another cookbook, and it is being introduced this week, and I thought this was an appropriate thing to share with you people. So I will also, there's a very nice article in the April/May issue of Sac Town Magazine that they spent four pages focusing on Placer County agriculture. So I brought one of those for each of you as well. I would like to invite you, the book is going to be launched on April 28th, which is, I think, this coming Saturday, at the Auburn Farmer's Market. We'll be signing books between 11:00 and 2:00. And then we will also have another launch in Roseville on May 6th at the Bushnell's Nursery, which is on Douglas Boulevard in Granite Bay. So, and there are lots of things happening around this cookbook. We were very fortunate yesterday morning to be on Channel 13. It was a very quick little "We Made Strawberry Fool," which I thought was appropriate. And it's a British dessert, Jim. You had this confused look on your face. At any rate, I'm going to, I brought books for all of you, and I'll pass them out, and then I have some other errands to run in Tahoe City, and I'm zipping back down the hill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne. Congratulations, yes. And I'll see you on Saturday. Any other public comment at this time? Oh, yes. Very visual public comment.
It's really great that Joanne's here, actually, today, for a number of reasons. But let's speak to those other women.
So I'm Angela Tati with the Arts Council of Placer County. I do live in Auburn. Really glad to be here and see you all this morning. I'm here to just show and tell about one of your artists from Kings Beach, Pamela Hunt-Lee. I'm very happy to introduce her entry into this year's Outside the Box exhibit and benefit auction. Pamela has lived in Kings Beach for 13 years. She can't be with you today because she's in La Quinta finishing up commissions. She's painting five murals there. So she's rented an apartment and is living there until she completes the project. She said that yesterday it was 105 degrees there, and she could only paint for three hours early in the morning because the brush would dry before she could get it to the wall. So, but what I brought for you today actually started with a raw wooden box out of plywood. She took the box home, and her job in two months was to turn it into a work of art. She normally paints rocks. She also paints farmer's market scenes, Joanne. Have you made Pamela Hunt-Lee's acquaintance? She'll really want to see your book. I actually talked to her about it on the phone yesterday. So, and then in April, the boxes come in to be exhibited in the Arts Building downtown Auburn at 808 Lincoln Way, and on May 19th, they'll be auctioned off. And the proceeds will help support our promotions and artists and organizations throughout the county, including North Tahoe Arts Center. And Kelly Cutler, the new executive director there, couldn't be here today because she's, it's her Tuesday off with her children. But she's working very hard to really help North Tahoe Arts push out. They're preparing for their North Tahoe Art Tour, which happens in June. And if you'd like to read more about Kelly, I urge you to take a look at Perspectives Arts News Magazine online. There are several articles, one for each sector of the communities of Placer County. And there's a really great article currently on Kelly Cutler and the North Tahoe Arts Center. And I think my three minutes is just about up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward under public comment at this time and comment on anything that is not on today's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we will move to Supervisors. Because I don't have a set of lights here, I'm just going to, Supervisor Euler, anything? Supervisor Duran? Supervisor Holmes? Supervisor Wiegand? Well, that was a very quick committee report, so, thank you. We will move on to consent agenda at this point. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll-call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the Board taking action, and any consent item may be moved for discussion by the Board or a member of the public. Is there anyone who would like to pull anything from the consent agenda today? Anyone from the audience? All right. Seeing none, Ann?
Move approval.
Good point. Thank you. It's early. All right.
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes. A motion. Always good. Thank you. All right. We are a little bit early for our first timed item, and just for those folks who aren't aware of it, we do have a supplemental agenda. We do have a 9:15 timed item that we are not quite to, and that will be a commendation honoring North Tahoe Fire Protection District Chief, now retired, Dwayne Whitelaw. But since we are not quite to our 9:15 timed item, let's begin with our first departmental item, which is Item 5, Community Development Resource Agency Planning, TRPA Draft Regional Plan Update. Steve Biond presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. As you stated, I'm Steve Biond of the Community Development Resource Agency. Today we bring before you an update of the status of the regional plan update for Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Staff's intention is to make you aware of where the plan update is in the process and to identify the next steps for the county. At this point, we're not requesting any Board action. Part of the reason for that is TRPA is set to release the regional plan update draft documents and related draft environmental impact statement and Code of Ordinance update at their governing board meetings tomorrow and the following day. The only decision that will be made at the end of those meetings is for the length of the comment period for the draft plan and documents. The governing board will be making a decision as to whether to have a 60, 75, or 90-day review period for that document. In an effort to meet the state-imposed mandate of December 2012 for the adoption of the regional plan, approximately six months ago, the TRPA formed a subcommittee to evaluate and reach resolution to some of the issues facing the regional plan update. Early in the process, it was determined that some of the issues facing the regional plan update wasn't practical or feasible to reach a decision on prior to that deadline. As such, a number of those items were moved to a future to-do list, which will be taken up immediately following the adoption of the regional plan update. As you're aware, our staff has been actively following the TRPA progress on the regional plan update and providing feedback along the way at the regional plan update committees and the subcommittee meetings. We have consistently taken a team approach to reviewing the information provided by TRPA, and input has been provided by Department of Public Works, Planning Services, Engineering Surveying, the County Executive Office, Facility Services, and the former Redevelopment Agency with respect to how TRPA's current and proposed documents would affect each of those respective disciplines. Because county staff is providing this status update in advance of the release of the draft regional plan, the staff report contains a summary of some of the issues that we anticipate providing comment. What staff will be doing is, after we've had an opportunity to review the documents that are released by TRPA, we will be returning to your Board, seeking comment and input on how to respond to TRPA during the comment period. Just to touch on a few of the items listed in the staff report, in the interest of time, I won't cover all of them, but some of the larger issues that we've consistently identified throughout the process is, there's a number of instances in their document where they speak to delegating more review authority to the local jurisdictions. Both Placer County staff, as well as the staff from other jurisdictions, have commented that, in concept, we like that idea. However, a lot of the information contained within their Code of Ordinance then gets to be so specific as to really limit our latitude and ability to determine our own destiny with our future documents. Another item that's been identified throughout this six-month regional plan update committee process, as well as much prior, was continuous request from the county and other local jurisdictions to reduce the duplicative review. This area is quite unique, as you're aware, and there's a lot of different agencies that have the similar requirements. So staff from local jurisdictions was trying to eliminate that and identify areas where we could be a little bit more concise. There was, have also been comments from all the local jurisdictions with concern about the allocation of the different commodities, whether it's tourist accommodation units, commercial floor area, or residential units of use. The primary concern is that with a 20-year plan, that we're not certain that there's enough allowances or commodities contained within the plan to cover that 20-year time One of the last items is the desire to have allowances made to reflect the existing built environment. Staff from the different local jurisdictions have asked that it would be nice to have something similar to a variance process or something to deviate when it's found that the code may need a little adjustment to allow for some of the existing development and redevelopment of properties. So, thank you for your time today. As stated, staff's intention is to return back to your Board after we've had an opportunity to thoroughly review the documents that'll be released, and we will also be preparing a draft letter as part of that staff report to return to your Board. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any, about this topic or anything that's contained within the staff report.
I'll start down here. Supervisor Wiegand?
Supervisor Holmes?
Mr. Duran? Kirk, anything? Okay. I do have one comment, which is, I assume we're going to be weighing in on the time period. I would direct staff to ask for the full 90 days. I think this is a substantially complex and detailed document, that it really will require that length of time for not just us, but also interested members of the community and other jurisdictions to really review this and look it over appropriately and comment appropriately. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the timing could not be more perfect. That takes us to 9:15, and our first timed item. And it is my absolute and sincere pleasure to be presenting this item today. I'll be presenting a commendation on behalf of our Board and the County of Placer to North Tahoe Fire Protection District Chief, Dwayne Whitelaw, who served 27 years here in our local district, and over 20 of those years were served as fire chief. This is particularly meaningful to me because, in the interest of full disclosure, my husband was, is, one was, I guess, since he retired, one of his employees. And so Chief Whitelaw and I have known each other for many years. I have come to know, respect, admire, and really love him deeply. He's a wonderful individual. He's committed to his community on so many levels. And I'm going to start, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, Chief, I want to publicly humiliate you, not allow you to sit in the audience. But I am going to start here by reading this commendation. Whereas Dwayne Whitelaw began his fire service in 1976 as a volunteer firefighter in Susanville, and whereas he excelled in his performance over nine years earning the rank of captain prior to his move with his wife Laura to Lake Tahoe in 1985, where he became a part-time employee at North Tahoe Fire District. In 1991, Chief Whitelaw was appointed fire chief for the North Tahoe Fire District, located in Kings Beach, where he became known for his willingness to do whatever was needed to protect life and property. And whereas, in 1993, Tahoe City Fire consolidated with the North Tahoe Fire District to form the current North Tahoe Fire Protection District. Chief Whitelaw became the first fire chief for the North Tahoe Fire Protection District, which protects 31 miles on the north and west shores of Lake Tahoe in Placer County, and remained the fire chief until his retirement on March 9, 2012. And whereas throughout his career, Chief Whitelaw has been active in multiple community organizations, including service on the County Parks Commission since 1993, and serving for 15 years as the Cal-EMA Lake Tahoe Basin Operational Area Coordinator. And whereas Chief Whitelaw has a bachelor's and a master's degree from California State University Chico, which has served him well in his leadership while navigating the delicate balance in the Tahoe area between maintaining healthy forests and conserving the beauty and clarity of Lake Tahoe. And whereas Chief Whitelaw has diligently advocated for resources to enhance the level of fire service available in the community through his patient perseverance and professional relationships with elected officials, which has successfully secured significant state and federal funding to the basin for fire protection. And whereas Chief Whitelaw has led through example, motivating a packed and ready-to-go team of firefighters that provide high-quality public safety services within the Tahoe Basin. And whereas Chief Whitelaw has been a good-natured and tireless advocate for his community, demonstrated by his fire service career, his commitment to parks, his passion for the Tahoe Basin, and his continued certification as a paramedic. Now therefore, let it be known that on this day, April 24, 2012, the Placer County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in commending Chief Dwayne Whitelaw for his dedication to the North Lake Tahoe community throughout his 27 years of service, with best wishes for a long and well-deserved retirement. And it doesn't say it on here, but enjoy all your time on your motorcycle as well. So, thank you.
(applause)
Oh, hug. Yeah. I'm more of a hugger. Y'all know that.
Shake your hand.
And if you'd like to make any comments, we'd love, yeah, that would be, you know.
Thank you all very much for that. It really does mean a lot coming from your Board. I really think that was written well. I wrote it, so I thought that, no. I think my only parting comment for all of you, and I know you know it well, but Placer County has a lot of exposure for catastrophic wildfire, one end to the other, and certainly here at the lake, the fire danger is really high. From time to time, we have these incidents that makes everybody think about it. They'll rush and scurry and get their defensible space done, but then time sort of goes on and you forget. And my point in this is, please don't forget, keep the fire danger front and center in your thinking. Make decisions for projects or whatever that keeps in the back of your mind the risk of fire here being very real. The fuels reduction work that is done needs a real sense of urgency. You'll never get it all done, but the impact to lives and property following a big event is so catastrophic that, please, do your part to ensure that doesn't happen in Placer County. Thank you. Appreciate this very much. Have a great day.
I see a number of folks in the audience in blue. Is there anyone who would like to come forward? No pressure, no one has to, but if there's anyone who would like to come forward and make a comment, anything for Chief Whitelaw? Any members of the Board?
I'm coming up.
Oh, come on forward, Peter. You're in white. That's why I didn't see you.
My name is Peter Poe, P-O-E, and I took Dwayne's position as acting fire chief, and I just wanted to say that we love him, and we're sad that he's not going to be with us, leading us, but we're really happy he gets to get on the motorcycle, like you said earlier. So we love him, and thank you very much for what you've done for him.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else in the audience like to say anything before I bring it back to the Board? Robert, anything?
Just congratulations again, Dwayne. Been a great pleasure working with you over all these years, and enjoy that motorcycle. Come on down and visit our neck of the woods sometime.
And thank you for the comments about the catastrophic wildfire and the threat. It's something that we have to really keep in mind. As you know, my background is in fire district, and so I'm well aware of that. So thank you for reinforcing that.
Chief, just thank you for your service.
Ditto that.
Thank you, really, truly, for everything you've done for the community and the fire district specifically. You're an inspiration to all of us, and I would say we'll miss you, but I plan on seeing a lot of you in the coming months and years. So, Dwayne, thank you. Getting back to our regular agenda here, if anyone would like to file out, I'll give you a minute to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're not quite ready for our 9:30 timed item, so will we be moving to Department Item 5B, Tahoe Basin Community Plan Update. Crystal Johnson presenting. Crystal Johnson. Jacobson, where did that come from? Sorry about that.
That's okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Placer County Planning Services Division, and I'm here today to provide you with an update on the county's Tahoe Basin Community Plan Update work program. So since our last update to you in late October of last year, we have launched our public outreach strategy for the work program, and then, which I'll get to in more detail here in just a minute, but we've also been continuing our coordination with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, as you just heard. So as you just heard, the TRPA has embarked upon a fairly aggressive, what we see as a fairly aggressive schedule for the regional plan update process. And so we've been trying to follow that process closely as it relates to our community plan update efforts. Given the need for regulatory consistency between the regional plan update and the community plan, we have been providing regular feedback and proposing modifications to the regional plan as it relates to any areas of inconsistency with land use or zoning and development standards. We have focused our efforts on monitoring this, really to ensure that the community plan update process stays on track and aligned with the regional plan update process. And now that the draft document is about to be released, we'll be reviewing that, and then also incorporating any policies that need to be in the community plan update as appropriate and necessary. Anticipating that release, we will also commence regular technical advisory council meetings, where the TAC will be tasked in reviewing the community plan update policy document as it takes shape. Again, the technical advisory committee was established to help in the development of the county's policy document. In addition, as I just noticed, we've launched our public outreach strategy for the Tahoe Basin Community Plan Update, starting with a town hall meeting that was conducted on October 25th, the night of October 25th here in this building, where we introduced the overall work program to the community. We also provided a report on how the community update efforts will build upon the community's visioning that had previously been done through TRPA's Pathways 2007 Place-Based Planning process. There was extensive visioning that was done as a part of that process, and we don't want to ignore that. So our intention is to, for this work program, to really build upon that visioning that had been previously done. In addition to that, we also began to solicit public participation in the process and announced that we would be accepting applications for folks to serve on what we're calling our plan area teams. Our plan area teams, if you remember, there are four of them that we are establishing, and that the purpose of the teams is to help the county develop zoning and design standards for each plan area that we've identified in the Tahoe Basin and Placer County. So again, we'll be developing a policy document, and then in addition to the policy document, we'll have four separate zoning and design standards for each plan area. Those plan areas are the West Shore Plan Area, the Greater Tahoe City Plan Area, what we're calling right now, anyway, the Tahoe West Plan Area, which is sort of the Tahoe Vista Carnelian Bay area, and then the Tahoe, North Tahoe East Plan Area, which is the Kings Beach State Line area. So we've got four teams that have been, that we're establishing for those areas. Those team members, we accepted applications for the teams throughout the winter months. Those teams have been selected and finalized and notified the week of April 9th, so those teams are established. The team members, or the teams consist of nine different members from each plan area. We have a balanced representation from the business-commercial community within the plan area, the environmental conservation community, and then residential community itself. So we worked real hard in the selection process. It was a very robust process. We worked with, we got the input of various different organizations and associations throughout the basin, just to ensure that we were, you know, getting their recommendations in the selection process, and then we thoroughly vetted those teams. And we have announced those teams at the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council. We did that on April, their April 12th meeting. We also have posted the teams on our website, and then you have a list, I believe you have a list in your staff report, Attachment 1, of what those teams are. So again, we've got nine members for each one of those plan areas that have been selected. And then we have also, again, we have a website that has been developed for the community plan. We continue to update that website. We have scheduled a community, our first community workshop for May 9th, and the purpose of the workshop will be to facilitate sort of working group sessions where those plan area teams will meet. They'll break out into working group sessions where they'll begin to actually develop or draft the zoning and design standards for their plan area. We have a press release that went out notifying the community of that workshop, and it will be open to the public. And then we also have noticed that in the paper. And then really, the overall next steps is that we will continue to coordinate with TRPA on the planning process. We will be reviewing the regional plan and developing that policy document, and then commence with the TAC meetings to review that policy document as it takes place. Again, we'll be holding our first community workshop, and then over the next few months, we'll continue to hold those workshops on a monthly basis, so we've calendared those out for the year. And And really, the purpose is, we want to make sure that the community plan, you know, shares a collective vision of the community at large. TRPA has been invited to those meetings, and so we anticipate that they will be there and that our process is in line with the RPU. And then, in addition to that, we'll be holding regular updates to the NITRAC and to your board. And so, really, the purpose of today's update is just to generate any feedback or discussion from your board, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll start with Supervisor Euler. Anything? Supervisor Duran? Supervisor Wigan?
I want to take the opportunity to thank you for all the work you've put into this already. We had hoped to have the teams in place a little bit earlier, but we really wanted to make sure that we had enough folks who had applied, and so, we did actually extend the application period, which I think was very useful because we ended up with a lot of great applicants. And you and I have had conversations that we don't want to hold ourselves too strictly to a timeframe in this because we want to do it once and we want to do it right. And so, I really appreciate the outreach you've done so far. I know you've met with some of the business groups. I know you've met with the Resort Association and kind of explained the process, and I'm looking forward to participating at the first meeting in a week, I think it is, just over a week, and really looking forward to hearing what the different communities have to say about their vision for their future because it really is about a 20-year vision for this area. I think you've picked a great group of people, and let's make it happen. Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you very much.
Jacobson.
All right. It is time for our 9:30 timed item, which is item number one on our agenda, North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. This will be a presentation from the Resort Association. Holly Heinsen is going to be introducing this item.
Yes, the item before you today is for information only. As you know, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association is under contract to the county to provide a range of services and has been for many years. In addition to ongoing marketing and visitor services, the Resort Association has been instrumental in planning and development of projects, as well as contributions to the Kings Beach Community Core Project, the Tahoe City Beautification Project, and also provides for enhanced and baseline transportation services. So, with that, let me introduce Sandy Evans-Hall, who I'm sure you all know, and Ron Trivis, who will be presenting information regarding current activities.
Great, thank you, Holly, and it's great to be here. Sandy Evans-Hall with the North Lake Tahoe Chamber CVB and Resort Association, and thank you all for attending our reception last night. I think it was great that the weather cooperated and we were able to be outdoors, and you could see the beautiful North Lake Tahoe lake right there in front of you. So, this is what we are doing right now as far as trying to educate the voters about what we've been doing over the last 18 years, really, with the TOT that we have up here, that additional 2% that goes towards infrastructure and transportation within our North Lake Tahoe region. So, we've been taking this presentation out and about to various groups and organizations. We've also been working with the local media, thank you, Michael, for various articles on projects that have been completed over the last several years, and so far, we really haven't seen any opposition to this. Now, we don't want to be complacent and assume it's going to pass, so we're doing everything we can to educate people. So, this is the presentation we have. First of all, we're trying to make sure that everybody understands that this is lodging tax. It's paid by visitors to our area, and that we do collect a total of 10%, of which 2% is designated exclusively for our area and projects. And it was passed in 1996 by the voters. It's been renewed once, and this is our second renewal. More than $30 million of TOT monies have been spent in North Lake Tahoe, and we've actually been able to leverage that. As you know, with every project that we do, we're generally a minority funder of that project. So, we've leveraged over $160 million in projects in North Lake Tahoe. And some of the things that we've done, especially the county projects that have been funded, the beautification project, the commercial core project in Kings Beach that we even discussed last night, is really one of the biggest ones. As you know, we've set aside an additional $2.5 million on top of almost $4.5 million that we've already put towards the project. So, this is something we see is really important. Baseline services for TART is something that we have done recently, in the last four years, to try and assist the county in making their budget needs. We see that as important to our area, however, we also see that that is something the county may end up taking over over time. Our intent originally was really to do the enhancements to the TART service, which we've also been doing, things like the Night Rider and the 267 service that we've added on. We've been able to build bus shelters with bear boxes and recyclable containers. We've been able to help with the transit center and the redevelopment concept planning. Also, there have been a lot of beaches and parks that we've done. You can see here some of our favorite ones, Commons Beach, the Squaw Valley Community Park, North Tahoe Regional Park, and the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area. We've done bike trails, like the Tahoe City Lake Trail, which we should be completing this year. That's a beautiful one, if you haven't been on there. Transportation services, like the North Lake Tahoe Airport Express Shuttle, has been extremely popular, bringing people in from the Reno Tahoe Airport. We also talked about the Airport Welcome Center at the Reno Tahoe Airport. I don't know if you've all seen that, but it's a beautiful new welcome center, right in the baggage area, across from the Southwest Airlines baggage. So, if we don't renew this, you know, we're going to be asking the voters to go to the ballot on June 5th and hopefully vote for this. It is not a new tax, it's just a renewal of an existing tax. I think had we known that redevelopment was going under this year, we might have asked for a little bit more from the voters, but I think we need to keep that in the back of our mind for specific projects that we may want to do in the future, that we have some room to possibly increase that. This would be a 10-year sunset, is what we're asking for in this ballot. Again, not paid for by residents. We keep reinforcing that fact, and it only requires a 50-plus-one vote in June. You know, sometimes people ask, how is this going to, you know, increase or decrease our competitiveness with our other resort areas? And so, we took a look at what some of the other areas are charging in terms of their lodging tax, and we see that, you know, we're still really fairly low in comparison to many of the other areas at 10%. So, we do have some room there. We did survey our voters, and we went out and asked them via a phone survey, and more than 80% said they would probably or most likely vote for this. So, we do feel like we have a pretty good voter approval of this. They did say they would like to see us really take care of our shoreline and our beaches, that that was a key piece that was important, bike trails, our parks. Maintenance of those facilities was something that also was stressed in the survey amongst the voters, and anything that stimulates local jobs, they're in favor of. If we don't pass this, we lose approximately $2 million a year that would not be able to be used here in North Lake Tahoe and would not allow us to stay as competitive as we currently are as a destination resort. So, we will continue, if this is passed, to fund various projects. The Kings Beach Project is probably one of the most important ones. We also have the Homewood Bike Trail, the Martis Bike Trail. Some of those that we have on the books for the next 10 years are very important that we continue to do. And all Measure F funds and expenditures are audited annually, and it is a private CPA firm, not even through the county, that we do that, and we do make that available to the public. So, you know, the accountability of these funds is really watched. Not a new tax, it's a renewal, not paid by residents, and only for projects in North Lake Tahoe, and if not passed, we'll lose about $2 million a year. So, those are the key four pieces that we're really emphasizing with this presentation. And I think Ron has a few things he wants to add to this.
Good morning. What a bright and cheery-looking group this morning. It's really nice to see you. It's really nice for me to be able to see you. I just wanted to say, in connection with the TOT renewal here, that we really would like to thank Jerry and Holly, Jennifer, wherever she may be today, and Beverly, too, and Ann Holman, too, has been very helpful for us to get information. So, it's been a real county NLTRA project that we've done very well with. Just in these last couple of months, as you know, we've had several projects where we had the figures on there of 30 and generating, leveraging 160. Those are really up to about $36 million now and about $169 million worth of projects that that's worked together. We can only see that as a very successful continuation of a partnership that we've had for all these years. So, again, we thank you very much, and if you have any comments or things you think we ought to be doing differently, speak to Sandy.
Actually, Ron, before you leave, could you explain exactly what the boundaries are of this area?
Sure. The eastern Placer County is described more specifically as from Jennifer's house up on the summit in the Sreen Lakes area, and it follows the Placer County-Nevada County line down the hill and across the top of dividing Truckee with the basin, and goes through the Truckee-Tahoe Airport. And then, from that line, it comes down the, what we call the Truckee River Corridor, and passes and includes Squaw Valley, Alpine Meadows, into Tahoe City, and you turn right on Highway 89 South and go down to the Eldorado County line. And then, you can come back up the existing bike trail and go across North Lake Tahoe to the state line at Crystal Bay, in the Crystal Bay area, then coming back to Kings Beach here and go up the Martis Valley, including North Star. So, all of those properties within there are the ones who do collect for the county this 10% TOT for visitors that are visiting this area for 30 days or less. And then, the county, of course, and you all, are responsible for the allocation of that money, of which has been done in a similar format now since 1995, and I think that partnership has been very successful.
And that collection, that 10%, just so people are aware, comes not just from hotels and motels and sort of the traditional things that we think of as collecting TOT, but also from condos, home rentals, housing rentals that are less than, or 30 days or fewer, and...
Exactly, a greater percentage from those rentals than from the hotels or motels, but it's close.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions from the board?
Just a thought for anything I can do to help. Give me a holler, Ben, wish us all luck, but thanks for the effort and all of the work that's gone into this over all these years.
Supervisor Holmes?
Good work.
Supervisor Duran? Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
It's not a new tax.
No.
It's not paid for by the residents.
It's paid for by residents. No.
No.
I'm trying to help out here, work with me.
Let him roll. If he gets going, he's really good.
And it only goes to North Lake Tahoe Public Improvement. So, actually, the serious question I have is, I'm guessing, based on the photo that I see in this cool little brochure, that this little van is on its way to the Reno Airport?
That's correct.
I didn't know we were running. I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, that's the 267. Where is, that's the Mount Rose?
We initiated with the assistance of the Truckee-North Tahoe Transportation Management Association and Tahoe Transportation District, the North Lake Tahoe Express, as it's called, and that's now in its fifth year of operation, and each year, the ridership has continued to grow and the subsidy has continued to diminish.
And how do we, I think it's a great service and a great idea. How do we advertise the availability of that for folks coming into the Reno area?
In a lot of ways, the best way is on the web, and any time that you go to the North Lake Tahoe websites, it is front and center on that. The Tahoe Transportation District, TRPA, also has that on those. There's a lot of media advertisement of that that the Tahoe Transportation Management Association does. And now, as an extension of that, starting last fall, through funding, again, approved by you guys, we now, in the baggage department, or Department of the Airport, have this welcoming center, that it's a come-on-in, that's the main departure point for this shuttle, but it's also a very good information on, a center for all of North Lake Tahoe, what you can see and do. And that hits a lot of people. All of our conventions, conferences that come to North Lake Tahoe are giving that type of advanced information for arrival at the airport and then use that shuttle. And the provider, who is a private airport, Minibus is the name of it, they have the capability of going from one bus to 20 buses as necessary on these routes, and there's three routes that they do bring up to the lake that go back and forth from, I think it's 4:00 AM to 2:00 AM, almost a complete 24-hour service.
That's great.
It's a good one, yeah. And it's almost paying for itself.
Last week, when we had the mountain travel symposium up here, for instance, we were shuttling approximately 500 people to and from the resort at Squaw Creek via the North Lake Tahoe Express flying into Reno. So, it's really been a popular piece. I think it's incumbent upon us to take a look at, how do we increase the amount of transportation within the triangle? Because if you're coming in on that bus, you're without a vehicle. And so, we then are, we really need to make sure that we're able to supply that transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there are two things on the ballot in June that I'm going to be very excited to vote on and get to that 50% plus one, and this is one of them. So, any questions or comments from the audience on this item?
I did put these on the back table.
Great, thank you. So, if you didn't hear that, there are copies of this on the back table. If anyone would like to take one and share it with your friends, family, and neighbors.
And we will be mailing those out to all of the voters within this east Placer County area right before the mail-in ballots are received, so right around the 1st of May.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, we're going to move to Departmental Item 5C, Flood Control. Michael Johnson presenting.
Good morning. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Staff is requesting this morning that the board authorize the chair to sign a letter on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, providing comments on the Central Valley Flood Control Protection Plan. Also included in that letter is a request for a 30-day extension to the comment period for that plan. Currently, a 100-year floodplain protection standard is utilized throughout most of the state of California. With this current plan that's being proposed, the state is proposing that a 200-year floodplain standard be established. For Placer County, that would impact all lands from the Sierra Crest all the way down to the valley floor. What's of concern to staff is that the state is mandating compliance with this plan and is not providing any resources to allow for the implementation of that plan. The plan also requires that the county's general plan be updated within a two-year period from the adoption of the ordinance to reflect a new 200-year floodplain standard. At this point in time, staff is not aware of what impacts this may have on the various creeks and river corridors throughout the county, and it's for that reason that staff is requesting an additional 30-day time period to allow for additional review. As noted in the letter to the state that's included in your board packets, the county is interested in finding out what resources the state will be providing to help the county implement these new mandates. The county's Flood Protection Control District has been monitoring this issue and has had a TAC on hand for more than a year, looking at and ready to move forward should this proposal be adopted by the state. That concludes staff's presentation. We do request your authorization to move forward with the submission of that letter.
Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what's driving this? I mean, we're dealing with levies that, quite frankly, can't pass, in many instances, a 10- to 50-year flood event, and now they're saying they want to increase the standard to a 200-year. How about we meet the existing standard before we worry about increasing it? I just don't get where this is coming from.
It does seem to be an outgrowth of the work that has been conducted on the levies, primarily down in Sacramento Valley, where they are trying to establish a 200-year flood protection standard, and this new plan seems to be an outgrowth of that work that the state has been... And this new plan seems to be an outgrowth of that work that the state has been commencing.
Michael, I have a question with regards to the thirty-day extension. How, how much time did we have to respond to begin with?
Ken, do you have a?
Ken Graham with the Department of Public Works, and I believe it was sixty days from the original release of the Central Valley Plan. A very broad plan, very, a lot of policy direction, lots of questions in between the lines about how this could have actually affected us up here in Placer County. The plan is kind of divvied up between three areas: statewide policies, policies within the San Joaquin-Sacramento watershed, which does include most of Placer County up to the Sierra Crest, and then areas that are specifically the levy-protected areas. Really, I think it's an offshoot, it started after Katrina. Senate Bill Five of the state really came about after some of the flooding that occurred up in the Yuba County area, Katrina, all of that coming together, saying, we want to do some things differently. Unfortunately, lots of gaps in, in what some of these policy implications are for us, and that's why we want to have some more information, how the state will help, as well as how they may participate in the cost to help us do this work. It is still unclear about how this two-hundred-year protection will apply to everyone throughout those various areas. It is meant to be focused on the urban areas. I think most of us believe that's kind of focused on Sacramento, Stockton, those kinds of areas, areas protected by the levies. But the way it is written, and the way I think they have it intended, is they also realize that we do impact downstream. And so we will be regulated in some form, particularly our land use. Not just our exist, our new land use, but there'll also be the question about existing modifications to county facilities moving into the future.
Yeah, my, my only comment is, is that, and you probably, you and Michael and your departments know best, but I would have asked for more than thirty.
Yeah. I think it's going to be, probably not likely to get it, is probably the fact, so...
Supervisor Holmes? Supervisor Wigan? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, as I'm, as I'm reading this, it says the general plan, I'm assuming you're referring to our Placer County general plan, which, as we all know, our county general plan is simply tiered off of all of our community plans. Will all of our community plans have to be updated to reflect the two-hundred-year flood control? If so, what does that do to the existing mapping that all of our land use decisions are based on? Do we have to go back and modify all of our land use decisions, whereas we're currently making our decisions based off of centerline stream or one-hundred-year floodplain? Do we now have to go back and modify all of our community plans in order to reflect two-hundred-year floodplanes in our community plans? I, I mean, the cost and the time for this kind of a thing is just enormous.
Potentially, yes. Again, it's only those areas west of, of the crest, so it doesn't take into account the Tahoe area. But in terms of all new mapping would be required of the two-hundred-year floodplain throughout the western portion of the county. And as much as that impacts land that today could be land use, that is a significant issue.
And then what does that do as far as our planning gets dictated in terms of onsite detention? Do we have to start planning in for onsite detention in those areas that might be deemed as contributing to a two-hundred-year event? I mean, this, this is...
Excellent que, those are the questions we have, because a lot of how the plan is written, I believe, is focused on what's always been the downstream approach, which is open everything up and flush water out to the sea. That's not necessarily what we have traditionally done up here, because moving farther, moving water faster here just makes more water down in Sacramento later. The bra, the, the exact criteria of how that's going to be determined is not there. This Central Valley Flood Protection Plan is much more of a policy document...
Absolutely.
... with some accompanying following information that starts putting more meat on the bones, which is why we think it's important to get in early on the policy discussion in order to affect what's going to happen when they actually come down with the criteria and regulations that will impact us directly.
I'm just, I keep coming back, what's really driving this? I, I just don't, for the life of me, given the current economic condition, most local governments, and especially our state government, are under, what is really driving this kind of a, a directive that local government should have to comply with this, given everything else we're dealing with? I, I, this...
Well, I, I think the wheels began turning after Katrina, S B Five, which started this, was two thousand six...
Because we're so hurricane-prone here, is that Katrina was really...
Well, granted...
Lake Pontchartrain is going to just overflow and flood out Sacra, I just, I'm...
The Sacramento area is definitely one of the more flood-prone areas within the nation.
Don't disagree with that.
And after, and I'm not here to say I'm supporting it, I'm here just to give the information, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, I think is when S B Five came through, or it was before everything hit, and it set timelines and motions for this plan and following actions about how we would strive for this two-hundred-year protection. Those decisions were probably made in a better time when the state legislature approved the concept of a plan of going to two-hundred-year protection, at least in the urban areas. There are still talk that it will not apply to our non-urbanized areas, but of course, all of our land use areas by definition will probably be considered urbanized. Anywhere that's proposed to develop will be considered urbanized. It is a big change in policy for how floodplain management will occur in California, or at least the Central Valley.
My comments on this are, I live in Serene Lakes, as you know, and I'm actually part of the Central Valley Water District, and, and the idea that somehow Serene Lakes is going to have a two-hundred-year flood that's going to impact the Central Valley is a, a little bit of a stretch, frankly, because as we like to say, everything's downhill from here. But the concern that I've heard raised is not just the impacts to the county and what we would have to do, but to homeowners. My understanding is this would substantially increase people's homeowner's insurance to be moved from a hundred-year flood to a two-hundred-year floodplain area. Is that, is that a concern that we're looking into, or is that not on our radar?
Well, I think right now, the National Flood Insurance Program, the federal program that governs flood insurance, is set at the hundred-year. That is federal. This is state. Exactly will the feds, the federal government eventually go to this and make this part of the flood control pro, or the flood insurance program? I don't know. We are definitely moving forward beyond probably much of the nation. There are other people, I think, that also have two-hundred-year standards. But it is, it is substantial, potentially impact not just new development, but we have lots of questions that we've asked about, how does this impact whenever somebody wants to redo their house who happens to be in that area between the one-hundred and two-hundred year? Are they allowed to do that? Those questions aren't answered. Those are a lot of the questions that have not been answered. Their focus is on a very fifty-thousand-foot-high type of overview and policy view of this, and particularly as you get away from the urbanized Sacramento Levy, Feather River, San Joaquin River, River Levy system. I don't think it has been thought out as well as it could.
And, and my concern, just to clarify, and, and the concerns I've heard expressed by homeowners and, and business owners, is not with the federal insurance, but many insurance companies, local, state, California-based insurance companies offer flood insurance that you can buy through them separate above and beyond the federal. And the concern is, what will this change do to those sorts of rates? For, for someone who's in a, a hundred-year plain right now, and they're suddenly in a two-hundred, or someone who's not in one at all, and, and suddenly is in a flood plain because this has changed. And so, just, I fully support the thirty-day, I agree with Supervisor Duran, it may be a little bit brief, but I, I think we, we may want to consider adding that to our argument that we take to the state on this. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Michael, was there anything you wanted to finish up with? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation, and I think we need to take an action on this.
Move forward, comment on that. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Let the record reflect that Supervisor Holmes is out of the room. We are at nine fifty-nine, so I am going, now we're at ten o'clock. We will be moving to our ten o'clock timed item, Facility Services, Tahoe Truckee Disposal Company, Eastern Regional Sanitary Landfill, presented by Jim Durfee.
If you don't mind, I'm going to sit, I seem to be tired this morning.
Okay.
And I'm going to be, and I'm going to be up here for a few minutes. It's actually really a pleasure to be here to talk about garbage rates this morning, and I, I don't say that lightly, we don't get to do this very often, but we've worked very closely with Tahoe Truckee Sierra Disposal and E R L Inc., same company doing two different things. They run our collection services up here on the east side, and they operate our material recovery facility and handle disposal services as well. And we've worked with them over the last couple of months as we were coming up to their scheduled cost of living increase, which is, is fixed in their contract. They had a automatic COLA that was coming up that was about four percent. And we worked with them and worked with your staff to develop a strategy to accommodate that contractual obligation without impacting our customers. So I'm not here recommending any changes to the fees that are charged to the customers at all. All of those stay static. The tipping fee at the facility stays the same, the collection fees will stay the same. What, what our partners at T T D agreed to do was to spread the COLA that they actually do get over a two-year period, next year and the year after, none this year. And we are recommending that we also absorb a portion of that cost increase out of reserves that we have in the solid waste fund. We have the ability to do that this year without impacting either our budgetary obligations or, as I said, impacting the fees that are charged to the customer. So I do have an action that I need your board to take today, which is to approve an amendment to the agreement with T T D that would change the contract to provide for this two-year spread of the COLA that I discussed earlier. But again, it'll have no, no adverse impact to our ratepayers, and, and I'm really proud of our staff and, and with the contractor for coming to this conclusion, particularly during the economic times that we're having. I think it's, I think that they're both to be commended for coming up with a good solution. So I would recommend your approval of that amendment, and, and with that, hopefully I won't be back to talk about rates for another year or so.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the board on this? Seeing none, I, I do have a couple of things I want to point out. T T D is probably our most reliable service that we have in the area. They come rain, shine, snow, I don't know how they get here when the freeway is closed, but they get to my house when the freeway is closed every Monday morning with the exception, I think, of Christmas. They have recently entered the twentieth century, which is pretty exciting for me. They now have online payment, which they have not had in the past, and that's a wonderful improvement to their service. I did actually just get my bill, so I wanted to point out a couple of things while I have the opportunity here. We do offer a free hazardous waste drop-off through T T D, or I should say, they offer it. This is Saturdays, nine to one P M, those days, and I'm just going to put this out here as a unpaid advertisement, May nineteenth, June twenty-third, July fourteen and twenty-eight, August eighteenth, September eight and twenty-second, October thirteenth, and November seventeen. They are closed for this service in the winter months because it's a little bit problematic handling the materials in the winter month. The other thing that T T D does that is just a really terrific opportunity that I encourage any local folks to take advantage of is, in, in your bill is this free disposal coupon, which offers free two-yard collection coupon for Placer County customers, and it's an opportunity in the months of May and June to bring two yards of waste to the facility and at no charge. Anything above the two yards still must be covered, but it's just, again, another opportunity of, or another opportunity to point out how well T T D works with folks in the area. So having had that unpaid advertisement for T T D, what do I hear from my board?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Supervisor Holmes is still absent from the room. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to... Jim Durfee, item number six, Facility Services, Custodial and Maintenance Services for the Tahoe area.
I peeked ahead and I assumed I was going to stay sitting here.
Well, no wonder you sat down.
That's why.
That's why, yes.
I do have three very specific actions that we're going to be recommending for your board today that have to do with custodial and maintenance services up here on the east side at our facilities around the lake. The first would be that you direct us to proceed with what's called a best value procurement bid for supplemental custodial services in the Tahoe area. The second action would be to direct us to negotiate an agreement with the Sierra Community College District for the district to provide emergency and routine building maintenance services at our county-owned facilities here in the Tahoe area. And third, that you adopt a resolution that authorizes the director of Facility Services or is designee to sign these agreements and take related actions for the supplemental custodial and building maintenance services in the Tahoe area, essentially just negotiating the contracts and so forth. I'll talk a little bit about custodial first. Custodial services here at the lake require between one point seven-five and two full-time equivalents. We have one full-time employee up here who, over the last number of months, was off on a medical leave. He's now back to work full-time. While we were gone, your board may remember that we came in, I believe in about November of last year, we came to your board to put together an emergency contract, an urgent contract for custodial services up here. That had, that's worked out fairly well. Anytime you put together a new contract for services, there's always some little bumps in the road, and we, we've worked through those, and, and that has helped us to supplement the, the services up here. As I said, Dave's back at work now, so we're able to have him back on full-time, but we still have this, essentially three-quarters of an F T E of service that we're not able to provide. And, and based on previous board direction, you know, we've, we've developed this opening through attrition, and we haven't recommended refilling that position. Our recommendation is that you allow us to go through this best value approach to procuring contract services to supplement the existing staff up here. This is a little bit of a new process for us. It comes out of procurement services, and it allows us to essentially put together a rating criteria for the contract services that allow us to, including the best cost, that is one of the high criteria, is the lowest cost, but it allows us to evaluate past performance, bonding capability, experience of the, of the firm and so forth. So it, it gives us a little bit of latitude to, to look at quality along with the cost, and, and we're pretty excited about being able to do that. We do want to put it out to bid. We did a sole source back in November. We do recommend that if this is going to be an ongoing service, and what we're recommending is a two-year term right now, but we do want to put it out to bid, we want to give all of the local contracting community the ability to, to put in bids on this and, and see what's out there. We didn't have time to do that back in November when we awarded the original contract. So that's, that's what we're recommending on doing with custodial. Maintenance is a little bit different topic. We don't staff maintenance up here at Tahoe, we send folks from Auburn. And we try to be as efficient as we can, we always try to put together as many work orders as possible, but there are lots of times when you'll have one urgent issue and we'll have to send somebody up all the way from Auburn. Anytime we send someone, whether they have a full list of, of work orders or just one work order, there's approximately three hours of windshield time that goes along with that. So it makes our cost for providing maintenance services up here extraordinarily high. In keeping with a lot of the policy discussion that we've had over the last several years in terms of supplementing our services, we have been looking to some of the other partners that we have up here, other agencies up here. We've had discussions with both of the P U Ds here at the lake, and at this, at this point in time, it didn't work out well for them to be providing services. But Sierra Community College recently opened a facility in Truckee, and they have local staff up here now, they have folks that are living up here and working on their facilities in Truckee. We entered into some just really casual discussions with them, and it turned out that they would be interested in having further, more formal discussions to see if we could come together with a contract for them to provide some routine maintenance... to see if we could come together with a contract for them to provide some routine maintenance and then emergency call-type stuff. We would still have to send folks up here from time to time, but by doing this, we'd be able to avoid an awful lot of that windshield time. Now, through attrition in the Building Maintenance Division, we have far fewer staff than we have had traditionally. As a matter of fact, I think overall in that division, we've gone from, don't quote me on this, but from about 77 folks down to about 50, I believe. So we're way down in terms of staff. What I'm telling you is that by, A, we're not going to displace anybody to do this. This is simply to supplement staff, and I have plenty of work for the remaining folks to do down on the other side of the hill. So it's not going to create any kind of a surplus in labor, if you will. So my recommendations are, as I noted, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We're pretty excited about the opportunity to work with Sierra College. I think that could prove to be beneficial in a lot of ways. And I would recommend approval of all three of those items.
Any comments from board members?
Yeah, the only comment is, I appreciate you bringing this item to us and communicating with the Sierra College District. And this is the type of thing that I think governments and other entities need to do more of, because inherently in the times that we are living in right now, we have to find different ways of providing services. So this is a good thing, and I'm excited to hear about it.
And I would just note that on a call-by-call basis, this could be, you know, 40 or 50% less expensive because of that wasted time. It could be vastly less expensive.
Any other comments from the board? Holly?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, based on your board's direction, several years ago, staff continues to look at alternative service delivery models, and I think this is a really good example of looking at an appropriate mix of alternative service delivery options to optimize what our resources are, what our staffing is, and move forward in a way that is cost-effective where we still maintain a high level of service. So I think that early direction has really resonated with staff and departments, and I think Jim brings a good example here, so I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public on this item? All right, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval of the item.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We're a few minutes shy of our next timed item, so we'll move at this time to departmental item number seven, Public Works. Auburn Ravine Road Interstate 80 Bowman Road Caltrans Cooperative Agreement, Peter Kratz presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Peter Kratz, Public Works, yes, here on 7A for our department. This is a request that the board adopt a resolution to authorize the Director of Public Works to enter into and execute a cooperative agreement with Caltrans to receive project funding in the amount not to exceed $250,000. The funding, if received, will be used to construct improvements at the Auburn Ravine Road Interstate 80 and Bowman Road intersection down in Auburn. The improvements will consist of making lane separation for westbound through and right-turn traffic, thereby improving traffic flow at the intersection. The construction will also provide a road overlay, restriping, better pedestrian access, and signal improvements. Since existing and future traffic movements at the intersection directly affect vehicles on Interstate 80 on-ramp, off-ramp, and bridge overcrossing, Caltrans has offered to contribute funding to the project. The cooperative agreement will not be enforced until an encroachment permit is approved by Caltrans for the project. Environmentally, the action today is not a project as defined by SECA law and thus is exempt. Fiscally, the construction cost is estimated at $414,000 overall, which will be funded by $250,000 from Caltrans via this cooperative agreement, and the remainder to be funded by the Auburn-Bowman region of the countywide traffic fee program. And our department's proposed 1213 fiscal year budget includes the forecasted funding. So with that, I ask that you approve this item and here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Wiegand? Holmes? Dorian? Euler?
As someone who has squeezed through this traffic many times myself, I think this is long overdue. Are there going to be any impacts on the local businesses there, other than just construction impacts? Are we going to have to take any of their frontage, or?
I don't, I think everything can be constructed within the existing right-of-way through there. There may be some delays or issues during construction, but no full-time closures that I'm aware of and no right-of-way takes that we perceive.
And will this have any impact on traffic coming from Forest Hill or across the Forest Hill Bridge, again, other than just the sort of delays associated with the actual construction project?
Just with construction, right. And it's good to note that originally, you know, we just looked at this congestion issue and started talking to Caltrans staff, and then it looked at where we saw opportunities to deal with the road overlay, do some restriping, do some pet access issues. So it kind of ballooned a little bit, all for good reasons. But I think overall, the project, other than delays during, somewhat, some small delays during construction, this will be improvements for a lot of different things for flow capacity.
And what is our expectation on the timeframe for this?
I'm thinking that it's probably a next-year project. By the time we work out the details on executing the cooperative agreement and putting all the funding in place, it's probably a 2013 project.
So we'll have ample time, then, to communicate to the local businesses and to the Forest Hill residents that they will be likely seeing some construction impacts on their traffic?
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval of the item.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
We will now move to our 1015 timed item, which is a presentation through the County Executive Office Economic Development Department from Dave Snyder regarding the status of Tahoe City Downtown Association and the North Tahoe Business Association.
Good morning, Madam Chair, honorable members of the board. This morning, we have two presentations. The first is from our Tahoe City Downtown Association, which you'll soon see, has more than 140 local members. They implement the Main Street principles throughout their program. They provide a central resource for local merchants. They also work to support many events, promotions, and initiatives for visitors and bring great value to their business members. Their many partners include the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, which you heard from this morning, the Chamber, the Westshore Association, as well as Rotary Kiwanis and others. Placer County's redevelopment department currently provides financial support in the amount of $65,000 per year, and that will terminate on October 31st of this year. So it's my pleasure to introduce this morning Mr. Steve Hoak. Steve is a seasoned leader with more than 25 years of technology, marketing, and business accomplishment. He's taught business marketing and technology management at the graduate, undergraduate level, secondary school, and before that, he had his own consulting practice. He's also worked for industry leaders like Apple and Hewlett-Packard and Cisco, as well as with a number of web startups. And we are very fortunate to have him at the helm of the TCDA. So Steve, take it away.
Thank you, Dave. I don't know where you got that, but over the top. It's my pleasure to be here this morning, first time with the Placer Board of Supervisors. Thank you all for coming back up to Tahoe, and it's just a real pleasure to be with you today. I'm going to, you can go to the next slide. I'm going to give you a quick snapshot of how things are going up here in Tahoe City. My version of state of the Tahoe City Union, we'll go through a little bit of what we're doing strategically during 2012, a very quick peek at our finances, which leads into the inevitable concerns about RDA that I've been working with staff on. They've been terrific. And then a little bit about what else is coming through 2012. Next slide. Overall, we're going to do well over time here in Tahoe City. You know what an incredible place this is. People want to be here, want to be a part of it, both residentially, oh, look, the pickle, want to be a part of it, both residentially and as visitors, and we're delighted for that. That said, it's probably not news to anybody that we continue to face severe economic headwinds up here in Tahoe City. You can't open the papers without hearing about how the Fortune 500 is bouncing back in this country, but that is not true in small-town America, and it is definitely not true up here at Lake Tahoe. A day doesn't go by that I'm not talking to either established or new business people up here who are still suffering mightily. Mother Nature was not kind to us in the face of these economic headwinds, and we've all seen what failed to happen this year in terms of snowfall. It was just a death knell for some of our local businesses, and even our established, longtime, relatively successful owners and managers have really had a heck of a time. And so our fingers are crossed that we have a good transition this spring and summer and bounce back. Our outlook is positive over the longer term. It's an incredible place. People want to be here. And the community has just been amazing in pulling together to mobilize for the future. Volunteerism, community participation is growing, albeit a little bit slowly. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And TCDA has been really pleased to be well-supported as an organizing and advocacy representative up here. And I know a lot of you have touched us, and we appreciate all the support we've had. We've had some really great turnover on our board and our staff. It's really been healthy turnover. We tell people they can resign from our board, but they can't get away. We keep them all assigned to committees, and people are always glad to help out. So that's terrific. It's been really fun for me to get aboard in the last few months, help out, get to work with people like Dave, increasingly with Supervisor Montgomery, and look forward to working with the rest of you as well. So it's really going to be a great new chapter, but we're shoveling out of a deep hole, and I can't state that loudly enough. I won't go too deeply into RDA. I do have one slide in this short deck. It's a big hole. We'll show you just how big it is, and we're asking for some support so that we can get ourselves out of that hole. Finally, we continue to be concerned as a business association about the issues surrounding regulation and permitting here locally, whether it's new businesses working to start up, existing businesses working to renovate or make upgrades. There's a regulatory thicket that you all are more familiar with than I am, but it continues to be big. Supervisor Montgomery, I know you were even involved in an email thread over this weekend about just one example, local project. And it's not about that specific project, although we're concerned about everyone. But I hope that I can enter into a dialogue with you in the coming months about what we can do to cut through some of the red tape. And again, I'm a relative novice. I come from the corporate world. We had our own issues there, but some ways of cutting through things as well. And I hope that we can be a part of making life a little bit easier for people who are bringing investment into our community, whether it's established players or new players. And I've got a list as long as my arm of projects that are facing these kinds of issues today, and I hope it's something that we can really step into in coming months, and you all know where to find me for that. So I came up with a relatively simple picture of strategy for 2012 for us. First is bake a bigger pie. We operate as a nonprofit up here, but we want to run ourselves like a business. So we've got three legs to all this, and part of it is financial. It was easy for me to spot when I built my first budget up here that we could go further in pursuing sponsorships up here and pursuing grants, in selling more food and beverage, and in doing fundraisers. All this is part of bootstrapping ourselves and looking for appropriate support within the community to do so. I always talk to my sponsorship friends about getting the proverbial and actually literal Subaru to come up and help us here at Lake Tahoe. And we've done a lot with local sponsors, but there's no reason why we shouldn't be reaching out further. I won't go further into this, except to say that there is a lot of upside, and we are working to grow and diversify our pie up here so that we can support ourselves better. I'm also quick to point out to my board and team that I'm part-time. The rest of my teeny-toe staff is part-time, and we've got about 10 cents in the budget up here. So everything we do is through the good efforts of other people and candidly, other people's money. So I depend heavily on my board, on our growing staff of volunteers, on our committees, and just a little bit with contractors, who of course, don't always come cheap up here. And it's all part of gaining greater leverage. And then outreach within the community, using, whether it's newer technologies or existing technologies. I'm reminded of one of my board members, and we're having a conversation about Facebook and using the web more effectively. I said, "So what works for you and your customers?" And he points to the bar, and he says, "Most of it goes on right across that bar up there." So we want to be respectful of every form of communication that we have with our visitors and our residents through the media and other means. We've overhauled our membership structures. We've got more than 75% of our businesses are in the TCDA today. My goal is nothing less than 100%. So we're going to get out to the rest of it. We had to overhaul what we offer our members to make sure there was no brainer value for them and that we're representing them and getting them to participate. I want the checks. More than that, I want people to participate in what we're doing. And finally, the value propositions for our members, our residents, our homeowners, our visitors. Everybody should see just tremendous value what we have to offer up here. A very quick look at the numbers. We've been really fortunate, even with the economic headwinds, to grow our membership in the past year to over 140 members. It's just been on the back of tremendous support and tremendous efforts on our own part. As I said, we've upgraded our packages and tried to create a better offering for our members, both current and prospective. And even as I applaud all the people in our community who are stepping up to help, as I've gone around and met all these new people, I tend to see the usual suspects everywhere I go. And that's incredible. I can't believe what people do up here, but they represent a tiny proportion of our community. And I have this vision of the rest of folks kind of sitting on their couches, waiting for somebody else to solve the problem. And it doesn't happen that way. So it's our job to increase our outreach, get more people to come out just once, because once they come out once, we'll get them out again to help with something, whether it's selling a t-shirt, pouring beer, or something else. We'll get them out more and more. I won't bore you with all of the numbers here, except to point out just a couple of things. One, where I come from, you build budgets conservatively. We did well last year, but I actually built a budget and revenue expectations that are a little more modest than that, I believe, in preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. So we forecast it a little lower year over year. And if we do upside of that, and I think there's a lot of potential for it, then we'll celebrate that along through the year. More importantly, of course, you manage the expenses on a day-to-day basis. Again, I built a flat budget, basically looked for break-even. I actually built it down a little bit lower than our actuals from last year. And again, if we can manage to that, keep our revenues flatter up, then we'll show what amounts to a profit that then goes back into new and existing programs for us. One thing I will point out here, actually, let's see, on expenses, on this one?
Previous.
I'm sorry, the previous. Here, let me use the pickle to go back. You knew that was there. Is the degree of redevelopment funding. You guys spotted that before I did, tremendous. So almost 40% of our funding has come out of redevelopment. So you can see the size of the threat that we face from the loss of RDA funding. When the Supreme Court decision came down, Dave got a nervous call from me about 30 minutes later. He told me to, "Don't be concerned yet. It's still early." And the staff, Tom before his retirement, Holly since, have been tremendously supportive in helping us look at ways that we can fill this hole. But it is a big hole for us. So let me talk about this a tiny bit further, basically skipping to the bottom bullet here. We put together a proposal with the efforts of Jennifer Merchant, who we hope is getting better fast now, and Dave Snyder, to replace the hole, the $65,000 hole that we face. And of course, our siblings over at NTBA faced an exact identical hole, to replace that with TOT-based funding. We're working that with staff through the current budget cycle. So we're grinding on through. That'll be coming to the board, I'm guessing, in the next two or three months, and we'd ask for your support there. What is actually a very, very small chunk of TOT is actually life-changing for us up here with our organization. And so we really ask for and look for your support in the coming months. To the exciting part now, a lot of what we do is about the events up here. We want to make sure that there's just so much going on in Tahoe City and North Tahoe in general that people hardly have to check their schedules. They just know there's always something cool going on up here. So we've been actively planning through the winter months and have a tremendous set of events just about to kick off. So please, come back on up. We're going to have a whole bunch of fun. We're going to use our funding shrewdly as we get through it, raise money shrewdly as we can through all of it, and just show a great time to our visitors and our residents. A lot of what we do also is involved in advocacy and outreach. We do this in association with our colleagues at NLTRA, at the PUD, with Placer and others. We thank you for your support in the purchase of the golf course, biggest piece of property in Tahoe City. We're so excited, both about to go out and hit a few balls and look at the future things that we're going to be able to do. Controlling our destiny with this piece of property is just tremendous. Controlling our destiny with this piece of property is just tremendous. I know a variety of you have been involved as we've gone on along, and it's a relief to get it done, especially in the face of the loss of RDA funding midstream. My hats off to Sandy and Cindy, who really led the charge. I mean, it was just amazing for me to be a small part of it. I wish I could have showed up with a checkbook for all of that, but as I said, I got 10 cents in the budget, and we can't even buy a golf ball out there. It's literally the truth.
I'll give you some.
Thank you. Thank you. And then I will proceed to lose them, because you don't want to see me on the golf course. We've got a whole bunch of other projects on tap coming up. We show up for everything around here, and our business community, community at large, appreciates our doing it. We try to be good stewards here locally in Tahoe City. No problem, Dave. And we're working really hard on it. My hats off once again to Sandy for kicking off the Tahoe City visioning process that we feel is going to give us a real cornerstone within the Placer Community Plan update, also in our opportunities to work with TRPA. We're trying to get more systematic about our outreach within the community, surveys, interviews, town hall meetings, and all that, so that we can have more than an anecdotal finger on the pulse. I won't go through all the bullets here. We really are at a pretty cool turning point for Tahoe City. We're kind of, we've been bumping around the bottom with spring. Things are looking up, not just because of the weather, but the economy giving us a little bit of wind in the sails. Volunteerism is one of the biggest things that I think is turning up around here. When I stepped aboard, I said the best thing, the first thing I needed was volunteer coordinator up here to start to awaken the community. Just a few weeks ago, through the blessings of Craigslist and a little bit of good luck, the clouds parted, and Cynthia Schroeder came floating down on angel wings to help us with volunteer awakening around here. And that's just going to give us a lot more that we're able to do to ramp ourselves up and get more people involved. So we've got tremendous cooperation now. It's sort of like all the nonprofits up here turned over their EDs at about the same time. So we've got a new ED club brewing up here. I work daily with my friend Joy over here in NTBA, sometimes crying in our beer together, but more often than that, making some cool things happen. So that's been a really tremendous thing to have happen up here. We're facing some big challenges. We look forward to your support on that. And with that, I'll leave it to questions or turn it over to Joy.
Any questions from the board? All right. Sign on, Joy. Did you want to come forward?
Thanks. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Are these yours, Steve?
Nope.
Placer? Oh. Sandy? Hold on now here. I'm going to start a little light here this morning. The future of Kings Beach looks so bright, I feel like I should be wearing shades to give this presentation. The long-anticipated and much-needed Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project will break ground soon and forever dramatically improve Kings Beach and its surrounding communities. I'm Joy Doyle. I'm the new Executive Director of the North Tahoe Business Association. I'm honored to be ushering in this exciting time of change. Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to share with you this morning a little bit of history about our organization, a little bit about me, and our most recent accomplishments. Oops, my presentation isn't up. Okay. Thanks in part to your support in the past and NTBA's future opportunities. The North Tahoe Business Association has existed for over 30 years, and it has been implementing the Main Street approach with your support for the past eight years. We help businesses to succeed, grow, and prosper within the Tahoe Bay-to-Bay District, including Cornelian Bay, Tahoe Vista, Kings Beach, and Crystal Bay. 2011 was a year of transition for our organization. I joined as Executive Director in September. And by the way, I've lived in Cornelian Bay for over 22 years now. I've raised my family here proudly. And my, just a little bit of history about me. My past work experience has been in marketing and advertising for North Star at Tahoe and Sierra at Tahoe for the past 11 winters. I've picked a good winter to get out of the ski industry. And prior to that, I worked in event planning and production for Snow Fest, the annual winter festival in our area. In January, our board, our 11-member board was joined by six new members, and together, we're working closely with our community, bringing fresh ideas, perspective, and enthusiasm, and we feel like we're already making a difference in our community. Once the NTBA embraced the Main Street approach, the structure allowed us to advance our mission significantly. As Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project rapidly approaches, the North Tahoe Business Association Design and Economic Vitality Committees have worked on several related projects, while the Promotion Committee focuses primarily on events. We continue to partner with Placer County Department of Public Works on the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project by providing leadership, information, and advocacy between the county and Kings Beach property owners, business owners, and residents. I feel the need to comment about how important the Commercial Core Improvement Project is to our area, and I urge the Board of Supervisors to ensure the project's completion, which is impacted currently by RDA's demise. Without the project, business and property owners are limited in terms of their incentive to invest in their community. With all of our town's natural resources, we have so much potential. I encourage Placer County to capitalize on the revenue that will be generated by the improvements through increased property tax and sales tax. What a shame it would be to not actualize the countless resources you have already invested in this important project. Let's move on from that slide. NTBA's accomplishments and successes in the past year are many, including a seamless transition to new board and staff, an upgrade of our office and IT systems for improved efficiencies, cost savings, and to leverage new technologies. NTBA is proud to have retained membership since 2008. This is impressive during a downturn economy and certainly not the norm for chambers of commerce and business associations in recent years. Contrary to predictions, NTBA's membership actually increased during the year the Commercial Core project was improved. Within the last six months, NTBA developed and launched a new website that includes more visitor information. We are utilizing a new e-newsletter tool, and we've developed a new Facebook page, Tahoe Bay-to-Bay, which offers a chance to win Tahoe Bay-to-Bay getaways. We've also deployed a new advertising campaign this winter to remind winter visitors who come to our area primarily to ski and ride not to forget to visit the lake. It's very easy to do so. North Tahoe Business Association solely produces the Kings Beach Snow Fest Parade, Community Cleanup Day, Music on the Beach, July 3 Firework Celebration and Deck Party, Passport to Dining, and a Holiday Mixer. We collaborate with other North Lake Tahoe organizations on several additional events throughout the year. Special events are an important member benefit and as such, remain the focus of our resources. Events serve as a marketing mechanism and enhance the quality of life for residents. They are a significant source of NTBA's revenue, and events give visitors a reason to come to the Bay-to-Bay District and, most importantly, spend money. And here's our very own Supervisor Jennifer Montgomery in this year's Kings Beach Snow Fest Parade, which drew a record crowd of almost 2,000 spectators to downtown Kings Beach in March. And I just have to add, Jennifer was smiling the whole parade. At this moment, she was a little tense, because it was at the end of the parade route, and the little, what was it, a little VW wagon in front of her, a vintage car, stopped dead in its tracks, and they couldn't get the thing started. So she was a little concerned.
Had I known I was going to have a humiliating picture, I would never have let you present.
Thank you so much for being part of the event.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
In the past year and beyond, Placer County Department of Public Works and NTBA have worked together on several Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Projects, including the formation of a Benefit Assessment District to fund the maintenance of the improvements, a new Kings Beach Beautification Fundraising Campaign to reduce the project's funding shortfall, and a Public Art Commission to incorporate art into the Commercial Core. NTBA has provided significant resources to these efforts, many without compensation under our current contracts. We seek to brainstorm fundraising solutions for these projects with Placer County staff in the near future, perhaps this afternoon. NTBA is challenged to maintain its current Main Street scope of work while incorporating tasks and responsibilities related to the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. Based on our consultant's recommendation and due to Tahoe City's failed attempts to adopt a P-bid, a Property and Business Owner Improvement District, we are working to form a Benefit Assessment District in Kings Beach. The district covers the most basic of services, including sidewalk snow removal and storage, trash removal, landscape maintenance, and a biannual sidewalk cleaning, plus, of course, repair and replacement of amenities. Only property owners within the district boundary who have frontage or are adjacent to improvements will be assessed. Even though construction is due to be completed in the fall of 2014, NTBA and DPW have dedicated many, many hours on this effort, and we are hopeful to mail information soon to property owners, and our advocacy team is ready to follow up on that mailing shortly thereafter. Our organization is focused on financial performance. The board has adopted, unlike TCDA, a very aggressive budget to maximize events, membership, sponsorship, and grant revenue and stringently manage our expenses. Our fiscal goals are to rebuild reserves and diversify revenue sources with less dependency on Placer County over time. California's redevelopment agency demise puts 34% of our budget at risk. Without identifying long-term alternative funding sources, NTBA's ability to accomplish our mission and continue to serve our communities is in serious jeopardy. Like the Tahoe City Downtown Association, we're working with staff to identify other county funding resources for future Main Street contracts. Membership revenue has represented 11% to 12% of our budget in past years, and we're working to diversify our income and bring that up this year to 15% to 20%. I shouldn't say this year, over time and the next few years, to 15% to 20% of our revenue. We conducted a membership survey last month to identify the successes and needs of the organization and our members, and the survey data will be used to shape and allocate our resources. With the member survey data collected and through an extensive audit of past and new member benefits, NTBA revamped its membership structure this month. We simplified our offerings from five levels to three, and we've actually doubled the number of benefits in each level. Our projected membership increase will come through a membership drive to roll out our new program soon with a focus on value and return on investment for businesses. Because of the NTBA's history, accomplishments, successes, and involvement in the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, Placer County receives a tremendous value for their support of our organization. NTBA is committed to partnering and improved collaborations with the county, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, and other business and downtown associations to maximize North Lake Tahoe's economic growth and success. The full potential of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project will be realized through Placer County and our organization's close partnership. Thank you for your support, and we look forward to continuing and strengthening our partnership with you in the future.
Thank you, Joy. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I just have a comment on both of the presentations. And I really do appreciate hearing what your perspective is on the status of your economic development and your economic growth or what you see as some of the issues. I'm really interested in this comment that you make here on page, well, Compliments, Memberships, Retention, and Growth. And that comment is, "Flat is the new up." And I say that in a positive way, because I think throughout, anytime we have an economic or we have an event that comes along, we have to work really hard to find new ways to define what a win is. You know, that really encapsulates what your win is, is that just maintaining your existing membership while everything else goes down, unfortunately. So I'm very interested in hearing whatever ideas that you have, along with the gentleman from the Downtown Association, as what we can do as a board. You know, we do have a responsibility over certain things that we can control, certain revenues, certain taxes, and those kinds of things. If there are other issues that are maybe retarding the economic development with regards to maybe some of the entitlements process, the review process, or those kinds of things, I'd be very interested in hearing what your perspective is and what ideas you may have that could change that to make it more of a positive interaction. So thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
Joy, before you go, it's interesting to note that Supervisor Duran pulled that particular slide out, because it was one that caught my attention as well. And it was interesting to note that you gained 22 new businesses and you lost 22 businesses. How would you characterize the 22 businesses that you lost? Did they go out of business? Did they relocate? Did they just say, "We can't afford it"? What are the reasons, from your perspective, that you lose businesses?
My understanding of the past several years with how our membership flows up and down is that it's very, very common for businesses to join for a year or two and then drop out for a year or two. And it's very much dependent upon their economic success or possibly failure the prior year or two. And they are consistently weighing all of their options and the return on their investments, just like we all do. And so I really feel like there is quite a bit of competition for membership-based organizations within our area. And I feel like with the team of new executive directors that we have some new enthusiasm to work together and to collaborate and to bring forward the value of both being a member of the Chamber of Commerce and a member of your business or Downtown Association as well. And we're giving benefits for joining both. So I think we're working better together with our partners, and that's going to help. But times are challenging up here. I mean, Steve touched on that quite a bit. So I think that honestly has to do with a lot of it. The other point I want to make is we do also have individual members, people who come to events that kind of get caught up in the excitement of an event and then say, "Here, I'll write you a check for $50. I'll be a member of your organization." And then, you know, the enthusiasm wears off over time.
Okay. And I imagine then that you're also focusing not just on retention, but going back and talking to those individual businesses or individual not businesses who joined, who may have fallen off the books.
I'm looking forward to involving my Board of Directors in our membership drive, talking to all segments.
Alex is looking very uncomfortable right now.
Talking to all segments, lapsed members, businesses that have never been members, which I anticipate are about 50% of the businesses in our district. And just really doing an outreach, because we're just a staff of one and three-quarters, and there's not enough time in the day to reach out to 300 businesses in the course of a month.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Beth Moxley, a new board member at the NTBA, as well as a business owner here in Kings Beach, Rockwood Tree Service. And I also own a nonprofit organization called Sweet Charity. They touched on it, opening new businesses here has, going into new venture myself with Sweet Tahoe Time. As opposed to red tape, I'd say it's jumping through hoops. There are a lot of empty buildings within the community here. There are a lot of empty buildings within the community here in North Lake Tahoe. And I feel that if it was easier for business owners to open a new business and whatever you guys can do to help certainly would help the economic development here as a whole. So I feel like the NTBA has been very advantageous for me. And I hope that whatever we can do to make it easier for new businesses to open up would be certainly thankful on my part. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on this?
Where did my glasses go? Oh. Just kidding. I left them up here because I knew I'd be back. Sandy Evans Hall with the North Lake Tahoe Chambers CBB and Resort Association. And I think, you know, when I came here, there was a lot of questioning about whether we needed business associations. Are they competing with the Chamber? Is there, are we overdoing it? And my response was, I came from an area where I worked very closely with the Main Street Association and I really saw the value of having the local geographic business associations taking care of that vitality within their own communities. And a Chamber, a regional Chamber, reaching out and doing regional initiatives that bring people to our area. So each of those business associations that we have, and I currently work with six of them, I think are very, very valuable. And I'm proud to be a board member now, an ex-official board member of both the NTBA and the TCDA because I think it's important that we have that collaborative nature. And I find with both Steve and Joy's leadership that it is very, very collaborative, enthusiastic, high-energy. I think we're creating some programming that is going to benefit all of our areas. And it's, like I said, you know, we're creating these benefits for members. We're going to call them kind of the premium community contributor that are people that are members of both organizations because we feel that that's an important thing. We do different things. We have very different scopes of work. And it is so important to me that we have these business associations be vital. So I strongly encourage a funding of some sort, whether that comes through economic development or through Placer County General Funds, to keep these organizations moving forward. We'll continue to do what we can to collaborate on membership programming, on event programming, on promotional pieces that we can do of the overall region and what's happening, collaborating on when we're doing events so we're not stepping on each other's toes. And I think that that's the role that we can play is facilitating all of these organizations to work better together for a greater Tahoe region. So, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. I want to echo Sandy's words and just say, while there is overlap, I think, between the business associations and the resort association, it is absolutely not duplicative. What the resort association does is, I would say, on a little bit of a broader scale and the local organizations really truly do focus on their own communities. And I say that as someone who participates robustly in all the various events. I mean, summer is probably, summer is my favorite time. It's not probably my favorite time. But one of the reasons it's my favorite time is because Friday nights here in Kings Beach, we have free music on the beach, which is an incredible opportunity for locals to come out. But not just locals. I can't stress how many people actually plan their weekends, plan their trips up here, come up here to either stay in their homes or stay in our hotels or our condos or rental homes, adding TOT to our base. They're staying a Friday night where maybe they came up, you know, Saturday morning. Or maybe they came up Thursday and they're staying a Thursday night. Same with Tahoe City. The Sunday afternoon music in Tahoe City, people stay Sunday night because they know that's an opportunity for them. So I want to really emphasize how important the local organizations are, both here in Kings Beach and in Tahoe City, because they really do add to the value that we all have here in Tahoe and the value that's created for the county, created for the local communities, created for the resort association. Thanks to both of you. I mean, you do a really fantastic job and I look forward to working with you and trying to figure out how we can continue to get some funding to you because from my perspective, it's critically important that you continue to operate in the way you have. Dave, was there anything you wanted to add in conclusion?
Just thanks to the entire board. We really do appreciate your support. Steve and Joy have done a terrific job in just a few short months coming on board. Not only have they not skipped a beat, but they've really taken the organizations to the next level, I think. And I do believe they just complement the resort association wonderfully. So thank you for the close working relationship there that you've established with Sandy and the resort association. I think that's been terrific as well. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will move on to our 10:45 timed item. This is two items from the Sheriff's Department. Jan Gage, you don't look like Lieutenant John Weaver. You're far too short. Jan Gage presenting.
I was actually glad that Ken Graham didn't come up before me and readjust this microphone. Good morning, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. Janice Gage with the Sheriff's Office. This first item this morning, we are requesting that your board approve an ordinance modifying Chapter 9 of the Placer County Code. The revision designates July 1 through July 6 annually as summer holiday periods banning alcohol at Chambers Landing Beach located in Homewood. Costs associated with enforcing the proposed ban are not expected to be greater than the annual costs associated with activities during that summer period. Funds for enforcement are included in our proposed fiscal year 2012-13 budget and there's no impact to the general fund. And with that, our Tahoe commander, Captain Jeff Osnow, is here and he will give you a little more background and be available to answer any questions that you have on this item.
Thank you. Captain Osnow, welcome.
Nice to see you. Captain Osnow with the Sheriff's Office up here in Tahoe. And as we all know, Tahoe is a very popular 4th of July destination for thousands of tourists. And 15 to 20 years ago, we used to average 80 to 100 arrests during this holiday season. A lot of that related, directly related to alcohol. In 2011, that number was 17. That's a remarkable drop. And we believe that a lot of this is in part due to the proactive measures that have been taken, such as the alcohol bans. That's certainly one of the factors. The continuation of the Truckee River Ban and the addition of the Chambers Landing Ban is going to allow us to continue to be proactive by accomplishing several goals. Early identification of large parties, early warning to visitors that there are certain areas that you cannot have alcohol in, the ability to cite, confiscate, and destroy alcohol from those not wishing to follow the ban. And then, of course, the high visibility of deputies in the problem areas that have historically proven problematic with alcohol. And in the words of Lieutenant John Weaver, "Just setting that tone that drunken tomfoolery is not going to be tolerated." Our primary goal is to make the July 4 holiday fun and enjoyable for everybody that comes up here. And the alcohol-related problems that we've had, the medical aids, the injuries, the fights, everything associated with that, especially on the river and at Chambers Landing, they have proven to be problems in the past and the temporary bans have proven to alleviate a lot of those issues. So we're asking that we make this permanent through the dates we've requested and help us meet our goal of just providing a safe environment for the visitors.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Eeler.
Would you speak to the public notification of these bans? How is it that you make the public aware that alcohol is prohibited on them?
Certainly. And that's going to be a major part of this because everybody's going to go, "I didn't know." Signage, number one. Some signage at the locations. Most of these areas have certain ingress egress areas that signage will be easy. Press releases, of course. And we've been exploring in the Sheriff's Office, using Twitter, using Facebook and those types of things. We seem to reach a lot more of an audience in this day and age. So we'll use that as well. So social media, signage, press releases. And if anybody has any more suggestions, I'll take them.
Well, I believe one year, the Caltrans sign was sitting out there by the Y.
Perfect. And that's perfect. I neglected that. That'd be a great thing. We can put signage as you come into the basin. And then we also have the permanent overhead signs, which certainly would be helpful. Thank you.
Couple other suggestions that I would make is, I know that Officer Frisco, who I see in the audience, does reports pretty much every morning on Lindsay Withanay's program. And that might be a really good opportunity to just get it out over the airwaves as well. A lot of folks locally do listen to KTKE. I'm going to get it wrong, KTKE. I got it right. Good. And, you know, that's a very effective way, I think, of getting the message out. I did a number of outreach efforts to people in the area to see if there was really any opposition to this. You know, spoke to some folks whose business really does involve the sales of alcohol. And frankly, everyone was very supportive of this because it has been such a huge improvement over years past. And frankly, we want to be able to make sure that our public safety personnel, whether fire or Sheriff's Office or CHP or any of our other partners in public safety are really focusing on more important issues than a bunch of drunk people having a really great time but being obnoxious.
Exactly. And if I could just, we also have, in the audience, we have the representatives of Chambers Landing and River Ranch who have been the brunt of a lot of these issues in the past. They're present today.
Absolutely. And I would, at this point, like to offer the opportunity for anyone to come forward and comment on this item if you'd like to add to it. Please do come forward. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Hello again. Sandy Evans Hall. Lieutenant Weaver did come to our last board meeting and spoke to our board about this proposal for the Truckee River. And there was unanimous support from our board to the Sheriff's Office for handling this effort. We even said that we would also help. We have a lodging liaison through our office, our visitor information manager, and she's going to be taking this word out to all the lodging properties and communicating with them directly about this ban so that we can help our guests to understand what's happening through those lodging properties. And we also wrote a letter of support. So I'd say, you know, we're very much in favor of this. If there was anything else that we would add, it's that the weekend following the 4th, since this happens to be one of those odd years where it falls on a Wednesday, it looks like that weekend following is really going to be the busier weekend of the two from our lodging providers. And so we just suggested to kind of monitor, you know, keep an eye out and see if there were any problems that existed over that weekend following as well. So.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this? Please come forward.
I'm Richard Corsiere. I own Truckee River Rafting, the rafting company. So I'm all for this ban. I have been from the beginning. And it was amazing in the beginning how many locals would come up and say that my business was going to get hurt. They thought I was going to be against it, that banning alcohol 4th of July. Starting it in the 70s, the first 20 years was fine. Then things started happening and they did take over the river. And I started turning away the families, the tourists, the little kids, telling the parents, "You can't go down this river and see what's going on down there." So when the ban happened, it was actually, the first year of the ban was my busiest 4th of July weekend ever. Instead of getting off the river at 8 o'clock, 8:30 at night, we were home by 5:30. All the rafts were off the river. Normally, we will pick up five pickup trucks of trash off the river on 4th of July. The 4th of July now is half a pickup truck of trash. There's no trash. It's wonderful. So we're fully for it. I wanted to check the dates again. Was it the 1st to the 6th? Because this is the interesting year because 4th of July is Wednesday. So does this ban go to the 6th, which is Friday? Because we're going to have a problem on that Saturday.
Yeah, would you mind?
Certainly, we have staffing in place and we anticipate busy weekends. During the summer, the Sheriff's Office, we deal with thousands of tourists. Granted, the 4th of July is going to bring a lot more. We're going to have the staffing in place. It didn't make sense when we looked at this to do just for this one odd year, the year that falls every seven, eight years, or however it goes, to extend it out. The 1st through the 6th really, I think, serves the public safety needs and we are fully aware of the Saturday, ample staffing. We're ramped up for it. And, I mean, I'd love to make a promise there won't be any problems, but that's, you know, we certainly are anticipating a busy day.
And we'll get together and maybe talk about Saturdays all during July and August. Because they're becoming mini little 4th of Julys. Monday through Friday is fine. It's all tourists. It's all families. We have no problems. And I've got a crew of like 15, 20 guys down there and the confrontation from these people who end up at River Ranch completely drunk, it's a very interesting situation. But now our Saturdays are becoming like this. So we'll get together and see. But Monday through Friday, Sundays, everything's fine. So it's good.
Richard, thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. And I think, you know, potentially moving forward over the next years, I think there may be an opportunity to modify some of this language so that we create a broader time range, but relate it to the date of the 4th of July. So it doesn't necessarily cover the entire range, but we make sure that we can get a weekend on either side of it. So just potentially consider that for the future and maybe work with Richard to help identify in the out-years what that might really involve and then next year bring it back to this board. So. Jan, did you also want to cover 4B? Or just say ditto?
4B is a little bit different. We're requesting your board's approval of a resolution, as is required by the ordinance, designating the dates when the code banning alcohol on the Truckee River will be effective. Previous resolution approved by the Board of Supervisors only included 2010 and 2011. So again, we're recommending that the dates be July 1 through the 6 and be permanently identified by the proposed resolution to maintain a consistent annual holiday period and to ensure that the public receives sufficient notice and publication of that ban. There's no impact to the general fund. And we're happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we would request your board's approval of the ordinance and then also this resolution.
Any questions from the board? Any additional questions or comments from the audience? Okay, council tells me that we can take both these items together. So what is the pleasure of the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I look forward to a peaceful 4th of July. All right. We will now move back to Item 7, Public Works. We'll be looking at 7B, Cook Riola Road Bridge Replacement Project. Peter Kratz, once again presenting.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board, here on Item 7B. It's an honor and it's exciting to bring this item forward and I'll go into that. It's been a long time coming on this particular project. Our request is that the board adopt a resolution authorizing the chairman to award and execute the construction contract number 1125 for the Cook Riola Road Bridge Replacement Project with County Council and Risk Management Review and Approval and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders up to 10% of the contract amount. This project has been on our capital improvement program list for a number of years. I don't want to probably say how many, but it's been there a long time. And the proposed action today marks a milestone for moving forward on a very important and critical bridge replacement project in the county. As most of you know, I think it converts a bridge that only has one lane for traffic to two lanes and a generous bike and pedestrian path as well. It raises the deck elevation above the 100-year-old plane. So a lot of critical improvements for this project. It has been a very long effort in design, permitting, public outreach, financing, and utility relocation, but we are finally there. And I just want to acknowledge our department staff's effort, lots of folks involved with all phases of this project in our department, and acknowledge your board's patience and previous board's patience to finally bring this project to fruition. Specifically, your board authorized Public Works to advertise for construction bids on December 13, 2011, and the bid opening took place on April 9, 2012. The plans and spec packages were sold to 32 prospective bidders and four bids were received ranging in cost from approximately $6.89 million to $7.15 million. Our engineer's estimate is $7.2 million. So, you know, the bids were competitive and less than our engineer's estimate. And that's always a good thing to report on a construction project. The low responsible and responsive bidder is MCM Construction, Inc., out of Sacramento. Just to note, they are currently working on the Bay Bridge right now. They've done 1,000 bridges in the state of California. And their base 1,000 bridges in the state of California, and their base bid is $6,888,888. And our department recommends awarding the contract to them. Just to note on utility relocations, that's one of our big challenges that's being finished up as we speak, should be done in May. Part of the utility relocations will be part of the construction contract. So anyway, a lot of that was brought forward to your board previously, and that's being taken care of as we speak. The schedule, just so you know, we look at, is everything, all administrative tasks move forward? We hope to be on the ground on June 10 of this year. We look to it as a two-to-three season project. There will be allowance for the contractor to close the bridge down for a period of nine days per construction season, so I want to note that to folks. As much as we need to keep people informed out there in the community, we will. The alternative would be obviously the Walerka Bridge over Dry Creek downstream that people could take. Environmentally, your board certified and approved the initial study mitigated negative declaration on January 13, 2009 for this project. Fiscally, the construction contract, again, of $6,888,888, proposed for award will be funded at the 88.53% ratio by the Federal Highway Bridge Program, and 11.47% from County Road Fund and Traffic Fee Mitigation Program funding. So with that, we respectfully ask for your approval of this item, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thanks for your time.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Peter. Couple of comments, I just wanted to express my appreciation for you bringing this forward. I know the folks out in the Dry Creek area are very interested in seeing this project not only begin, but be completed. And I know a lot of work has gone into it. Over the course of the last summer, you know, we, through the MAC, went through some design phases where folks had the opportunity to provide input on the bridge design, and I know that they're excited to see the project get up and going. Just a comment with regards to the contracting, I made a couple of statements, I think it was about a board meeting ago, with regards to the need to be very prudent in taking a look at some of the liquidated damages clauses that are in those contracts, with regards to timelines and making sure that, you know, when a contractor says that they're going to get this done, barring an exceptional circumstance, that they have the manpower and the folks in order to get that job done on time. So if you could work with County Council and Public Works, your own department, to make sure that those concerns are taken care of, I'd appreciate it.
You bet. We will.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any member of the audience like to comment on this? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Thank you, Peter. Don't go anywhere, you're up next. 7C.
Bring a pause there. Yes, Item 7C, again, Peter Kratz for the record with Public Works. This item brings you up to Kings Beach, right here down the street. This item, it relates to right-of-way acquisition for our Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. I want to go through word for word for the four actions we're requesting of you today. Number one, approve the two purchase agreements for the acquisition of two parcels from Frank McGuire and Gabrielle Dentrikis. Number two, authorize the chairwoman to execute the purchase agreements and accept the grant deeds. Number three, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute documents related to the relocation of a business and residential tenant on one McGuire parcel. And number four, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a leaseback of one McGuire parcel for the Christmas tree sales for a maximum of three years that have been going on in that particular parcel. Background on this action item today is that this property acquisition, or proposed property acquisition, relates to fulfilling public parking identified for the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. Through the project, there is a loss of some on-highway parking, and to make up for that loss, public parking facilities will be built as part of the project. A couple examples that we already built ahead of time were the Brook Public Parking Lot and the Minno Public Parking Lot. This is very similar. We have this one and a few more to build, and we're trying to build them as fast as we can, so that when we go into construction next year, people have places to park. Now, the possibility is, we may not, once we acquire this right-of-way, we may not build this right-of-way, but we can still at least set it up for people to park there during construction. So it helps in that matter. Again, the property is identified as an ideal location for public parking to make up for lost parking in this segment of the commercial core. It is located on the lakeside of the highway and just east of the state park and beach area. 28 spaces are proposed on the two parcels, the parcel area combined is about 19,000 square feet. In this case, we've been working closely with the potential sellers, they are willing, I don't believe they're present today. They agreed on price for two parcels combined is $750,000 based on a fair market appraisal performed by our department. Because the parcels are currently occupied, Public Works is prepared for a relocation program for the tenants. We estimate the relocation benefits to cost approximately $55,000. In addition, we are entertaining allowing one tenant to continue using the property for a period of time based on a lease price still to be determined. The milestone for this, this really is a milestone for our Kings Beach project, as it initiates right-of-way acquisition using Federal Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act funding that we secured previously, that is solely dedicated to right-of-way acquisition needed for the project. Previously, we've acquired right-of-way with redevelopment funding, we've always had this other funding source that's critical for all the right-of-way that we need for this project. It also makes more forward-moving on this project, and recent funding awards such as the Northlake Tahoe Resort Association underscores the need, again, for TOT renewal that I wanted to mention, and it gets us much more closer to fully funding the construction of the project. Again, folks have made both, I just want to say, NTBA and TCDA made comments about, particularly NTBA, the criticality of this project, and Sandy had mentioned it, Ron mentioned it. It is big, we've got a lot of momentum, a lot of folks behind us on this project, so I wanted to make a note on that. Finally, I want to say that the project has been approved as a multi-agency environmental document, you know that before on the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project, to satisfy federal, state, county, and TRPA environmental requirements. The subject properties were cleared during that environmental process. The purchase price, again, is $750,000, and relocation costs are on the order of $55,000, all supported by the federal, what we call SNPLMA funding, and that money is programmed in our department's current and next-year county fiscal budgets. So with that, respectfully request that your board approve the requested actions that we've asked of you today, and here to answer any questions you might have. Thanks for your time.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Any questions or comments from the audience on this item? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Thank you, Peter. Okay, at this point, we will move on to our last departmental item, number eight, Sheriff, we are being asked to approve a budget revision.
Chair Montgomery, members of the board, Janice Gage, Sheriff's Office, we are requesting your approval of a budget revision and a master fixed asset list revision for our previously-approved regional public safety system replacement project, also known as the New World Project. This is really a technical budget revision, but it does move a sizable amount of money, $2.8 million, from our 2193 administration and support appropriation to our 21780 grants budget. The purpose is to better track the project funding and equipment purchases through the project's completion. We've talked about this with the Auditor's Office, it's a better, probably a better way of accounting for it. Only the appropriation number is changing, there's no change to our budget, and there's no impact to the general fund, and with that, we're requesting your approval of this item.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, just one question, Janice. With regards to the tracking, basically, there's no change in the process, it's just the change at the auditing level of how you're going to track the way that you're going to expend the funds here?
That's correct. Our administration and support budget, we spread those costs out across the department. This will encapsulate this project better in the 21780 grants budget, so that we can isolate those costs and equipment purchases and better track them over time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any members of the public want to comment on this item? Okay, I'll have a motion, and then we're going to need a roll call on this, because...
Move approval of the item, second.
Jan?
Aye. Duran?
Yes.
Wykan?
Yes.
Eulah?
Aye.
Yes. All right, that completes our public agendized items on today's agenda. We will now move into closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to pick up the items on page, Item 9, pages three and four of the agenda. First, there's existing litigation, the petition for review of the MPDES permit issued by La Hutton, and second, conference with labor negotiators.
Thank you. So at this time, if we can ask to have the room cleared, we will be meeting in closed session in this room, and if we could ask to have the microphones disabled? Thank you.